Good afternoon. The July 10, 2024 Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is convened. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Slick?
Here.
Commissioner Alvarez?
Here.
Commissioner Stoudamire Wesley? Commissioner Haggins?
Haggins, thank you.
Chair Cruz?
Here. Thank you. All right, I have a brief notice to read. As required by state law, Prosper Portland invites the public to access and attend this meeting in person. There is also a, excuse me, there is also a YouTube livestream video of the meeting, and the public has had the opportunity to arrange in advance to provide virtual testimony. At this time, the public may provide written testimony to the commission by emailing prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. Again, prospercommissioners@prosperportland.us. All right. Commissioner reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report this month?
Sure. A couple of things on the social calendars as we've been underway in summer. First is I had an opportunity to attend the Formula E race event with my kids, and it was just really great to see Portland hosting a world-renowned race focused on electric mobility. I think it, you know, fits in line with Portland's broader conversations and Prosper's broader efforts to support electrification in the region, and it was really awesome. So I really had fun. And then also related to kids and kids activities, had an opportunity to head out to the Beltway Green, the Green Loop Park out east by 205, and had a blast with the kids going out around the bike track. So again, just testament to the efforts that the city's putting in to create recreation and activities, and been enjoying them as the summer picks up.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
I had the opportunity to be on a committee that reviewed the Broadway Corridor RFPs for the affordable housing component on behalf of PHB, and was really, really thrilled to see so many strong applications. So I'm grateful for that.
I had the opportunity to attend the Portland Chamber Luncheon as well.
Excellent.
The Portland Chamber Luncheon.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
I was there too.
Yes.
Of course.
Of course we were, right?
And I should welcome our newest commissioner, Felissa Haggins. Welcome. Your first meeting today, so really happy to have you. That's just, that's just fine. You're gonna pass, you're gonna pass this month. Okay. Thanks, everyone. Next up is the Executive Director Report with Kimberly Branham.
Thank you, Chair Cruz, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Welcome, Commissioner Haggins, and it's good to be with you all. So as we kick off the new fiscal year, as you all know, our fiscal year starts in July, I'm taking the opportunity to switch up a little bit how I do the Executive Director Reports. We have, it's such a significant year, there's lots of big lifts that we have in front of us, and so I want to take an opportunity to provide a little bit of an update to you on major accomplishments in the past month, and then what some of the big lifts that we have in front of us in the next month are. So just noting here that July is Disability Pride Month. That started back in July of 1990 with the passage of the American with Disabilities Act. There is a great event coming up on July 20th where PHMEP, which is P-H-A-M-E-P-D-X.org. Next slide, please, Justin. All right, so as I think you're very well aware, in the last year, Prosper Portland launched our Business Advancement Team and Development and Investment Teams co-initiative of a City Business Retention Core Team to provide outreach and assistance to retain Portland's key traded sector employers with a particular focus on the central city but broader reaching as well. Working in partnership with Mayor Wheeler's office and Commissioner Rubio's office, the Retention Core Team successfully connected with more than 250 employers who represent more than 1,200 employees through outreach and visits and technical assistance and referrals. Among the companies that committed are some that you see listed here, so Legit Script and Daimler Truck North America, Deckers Brands, which is a footwear apparel and outdoor leader in the industry, Panic, Revan Optics, Sherpa Design, and Birch Bioscience. And so I want to both appreciate each of the companies for their recommitment or commitment to Portland and the incredible work of the team that has done all of this at work. So huge appreciation to Shay and Pam, Andrea, Sue, Joe, Brian, and Lisa for this effort, for the efforts in this work. I also want to mention that the Affordable Commercial Teneting Grant is now launched, and it's available in Interstate Tax Increment Finance Districts. So the board might recall that last year, late last year, you approved this funding for property owners and small businesses who are in the process of negotiating or renegotiating their leases. The goal here is to use Tax Increment Finance resources to help create access to commercial space and to support inclusive business growth. Funds are available for tenant improvements and space-related soft costs and permitting support to make sure that the space is ready for the new tenants. So folks can find out more at prosperportland.us/ACT. Next slide, please. And as of July 1st of this year, the City of Portland is piloting the new form of government before it goes into official effect on January 1st of 2025 as approved by voters. Prosper Portland continues to be, as you know, an independently chartered organization, but given Prosper Portland's close proximity to the City of Portland and the ways in which we interface with the City of Portland, there are a number of implications, and so want to talk to those. So just in terms of what's remaining, the same City Council will continue to act as our budget committee. They will approve, excuse me, approve any proposed TIF districts or amendments to enterprise zones, and the mayor will continue to nominate board members for approval by City Councils. Those things remain stet. But our overall official liaison to the city will no longer be the mayor or a City Council member, but will be a deputy city administrator. And in this case, for the next, at least the next year, that's DCA Donnie Olivera, former head of Planning and Sustainability Bureau. Very glad to be working with Donnie in this new capacity. From a staff capacity standpoint, our leadership team and a number of key staff are working closely to understand and engage in the change management process. It's a very significant amount of time to both engage within the service area and to think about how we are engaging on any number of processes as the administrative processes change, and also given the new structure and the fact that the spectator venue program is now within the Community and Economic Development Service area, we're closely, we are working more closely with the spectator venue program as well. So more to come on that, but we'll continue to keep you apprised there. Next slide, please. All right, as we look to the month ahead, I want to highlight two key projects and topics. The first is that after months of extensive work by staff at Prosper Portland and the Portland Housing Bureau, we are at the point in the TIF exploration process where committees are deciding on the language in the draft documents, as well as potential governance and oversight structures. So by the end of the month, we expect that each of the three, well, actually, each of the six areas, that there will be a decision made by each of the oversight bodies. So in East Portland, there are three working groups who are, will be voting on whether or not to advance the Tax Increment Finance Districts in East Portland, and the working group Steering Committee for the Central City will also take a vote to determine whether or not to send districts to this council or to this board for consideration, which would then go through Planning and Sustainability Commission, to Planning Commission, rather, and then go on to City Council. At the same time, Prosper Portland and Housing Bureau staff are meeting with taxing jurisdiction partners to talk a little bit about the fiscal implications and get through the consultant confer process. We will be presenting the final TIF plans in August to you all at your board meeting with the goal of identifying whether those move on to City Council for consideration at the end of October. I'm going to talk a little bit more about some of the key places that we are with those in just a minute. But before I do that, I'll just note that with the start of our new fiscal year, we now have funding to hire staff associated with the new small business office. So you will see probably by the end of this month, a position posted for the Small Business Office Manager. They're going to co-lead the office along with Robert Smith, who has been the Entrepreneurship and Community Economic Development Manager. So they will lead together to both integrate the existing capacity for our small business supports and to expand it in alignment with the funding that we have for the new Small Business Office. We're also, as mentioned on the slide, in the process of hiring a new HR lead and a new Business and Procurement Operations Manager, Senior Business Finance Officer, an Asset Manager, SPPS, and a Policy Analyst. So lots of hiring going on. So hopefully next month, we will have some new staff to introduce at the board meeting. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so I'm going to touch just quickly on the districts that are being considered this month by the steering committees. So this is the Central City Proposed Districts, the three Central City Proposed Districts. So there is a West Side District that covers Old Town as well as Downtown, and the Swiss cheese nature of that district is to keep within the assessed value cap and to make sure that we're not including properties that are recently improved and definitely won't need investment and would make it so that we had to take out a number of other properties, as well as some strategic properties that were identified. So the long kind of, I don't know what that shape is. The band is along the park blocks, and then the other band is along the color. So that's on the west side. On the east side, we have a district that is anchored by the Lloyd District and that redevelopment opportunity, and then a new Central City East Tax Increment Finance District, which covers much of what has been in the existing Central East Side Tax Increment Finance District, and is really anchored by the new OMC Development Opportunity. Together, the districts could generate about $1.3 billion over the next 25 to 30 years with just over $30 million available in the first five years and then ramping up after that. Next slide, please. Yeah. Like sunspots or something. Go to the next slide, please. Thank you. All right, and this map shows the three potential East Portland districts. So you see the one in pink, which is focused on Park Rose and Columbia, in blue along 82nd, and in black, east of 205. Together, the districts could generate about $1.5 billion for investment over the next 25 to 30 years with about $45 million available in the first five years. Slide, please. Background music. Okay, so in line with the City of Portland's affordable housing set aside policy, 45% of resources within each of the six proposed TIF districts would be allocated to affordable housing and would be directly transferred to the Portland Housing Bureau for preservation and development of multifamily projects for people with incomes of up to 60% of area median income, and for homeownership repair and down payment assistance for people with incomes up to 80% of AMI. With $1.1 billion of investment over that 25 to 30-year period, there could be anywhere between 4,000 and 8,000 new units across the six districts. In terms of economic and urban development priorities, the conversations to date have landed on about 45% of investments going to those priorities in East Portland and about 35% of the investments in Central City going to economic and urban development. And that would include opportunities for new and repositioned commercial real estate development projects with an aim to expand local and traded sector businesses, to provide neighborhood services and amenities, to support arts and culture and regional attractors, and to catalyze new middle-income housing development. Up to 2,400 small businesses could receive grants or access to new commercial space, and 20,000-plus ongoing and construction-related jobs could be generated as a result of this investment. Finally, infrastructure and public realm investments would take up the remaining 10% of investments in East Portland and 20% of investments in the Central City, with a focus on supporting infrastructure that enables community priorities leverages instead of replaces. So leverages and complements other funding sources and catalyzes inclusive economic growth. So the lasting impact of these investments could look like a reimagined waterfront. It could look like investing in the realization of the Green Loop. It could look like safety and sidewalk improvements in East Portland. So we're going to be scheduling briefings with each of you and sending you materials because we know it's a ton of information and it's coming pretty quickly. So just wanted to give a quick update on what we are sharing publicly as we go through this process right, right now. And then our final slide, it's my favorite slide, and that's because it is recognizing that tomorrow, we are going to recognize our own Chabri Vickers as one of Portland's 40 under 40. So she's... We are very lucky to have Chabri as our Director of Equity Policy and Communications, and look forward to celebrating her tomorrow. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That's a great report, and congratulations, Chabri. Great. Okay. Next up, we have meeting minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes from June 18, 2024?
A motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes, minutes are approved. Thank you. Okay, next, we have public comment for items not on the agenda, and we have two folks here to speak, Kevin Flag and Akil Patterson. If you'd like to come on up. Sorry to say it, but you have three, three minutes each.
All right. Sorry. All right. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Director Branham. My name is Kevin Flag. I have been the Construction Project Manager here at Prosper Portland since February 22, 2022. That's two, 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 two. I'm not a particularly superstitious person or proponent of angel numbers, but for me, that was a sign of good fortune. Today, I would like to share a brief public testimony as the ABSME 3769 Union Secretary, mostly about why I enjoy and appreciate working here at Prosper Portland. I've always been passionate, I've always been passionate about the function and sustainability of our built environments. As a civil engineer by degree and construction professional by practice, my studies and career have granted me the privilege, or at least I consider it a privilege, of growing intimate with many different cities' infrastructures such as Atlanta, Montreal, Chicago, Detroit. Detroit is where I worked prior, and now Portland. I began to notice a trend, however, privileged as a determinant of accessibility. Who can best access parks, green spaces, and public transit? Who has the best access to quality food? Who has the best access to quality education? The list goes on, but the, but these were the questions that went unaddressed by the general contractors that I previously worked for in the Midwest. These were the questions that urged me to seek the intersection of my technical background and my existential curiosity. Enter Prosper Portland. In my short time at the agency, I am most proud of how I advocated, advocated for a diverse group of small business owners seeking the design and labor services required to open or expand their operations or to some consider their dreams. Despite being a transplant, I'm connected to the city in material, intangible ways, and that's something that I cherish. In many ways, I'm connected to the city in stronger ways than my hometown, Prince George's County, Maryland, right outside DC. I share my personal connection to the work I do here at Prosper, just to give you another glimpse of how our union members, many of which are newer staff, show up to the communities that we serve. It's the why we express in every hire and committing that brought us on board. As Faith, our union president noted previously, more than half of our staff identify as people of color. Again, I want to go further to point out how new our staff is as well. Many of us have yet to celebrate a three-year anniversary, myself included. Many, if not all of us newer staff, had identified Prosper Portland as a workplace that embraced or at minimum was willing to grapple with the recent paradigm shifts initiated or exacerbated during the events of 2020 and thereafter. We are a purpose-driven and innovative staff because that's exactly how we emerged from a global crisis. Enter the collective bargaining negotiations. Instead of describing how this process felt, I will simply state the union's intent, which is to grow with an agency that is committed to growth itself, to hold ourselves accountable to our cultural agreements as individuals because that is the example the agency not only states but demonstrates. We hope to soon present a contract that you will be pleased to approve when that prioritizes job growth, flexibility, and competitive pay. In consideration of our contract, please remember that we seek only to, please, excuse me, please remember that we seek only that which allows us to do our best work. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Executive Director, members of the public, and staff. My name is Akil Patterson. I am a member of ABSME 3769. Today, I'd like to come to you and tell you a little bit about me, because oftentimes, you guys don't get to meet us, and so give you a little bit. I joined Prosper Portland by mistake. Legit. One day, I walked into my office over its, over next to City Hall, the Portland building, and I was told that my program was being separated and that I was going to end up at Prosper. No other conversations were ever had. It was one of the most stressful times of my life. And trust me, I was a DC lobbyist. That was easy compared to this. It was the staff here, it was the team, it was Robert Smith, it was the community that wrapped their arms around me and embraced me, and it was good. And for the first time, I felt valued and seen. It was good, and I liked it. I wanted more. Prosper Portland is a great place to work. But most of you guys wouldn't know about my past experiences. Most people here wouldn't. I was one of the few people that came out publicly as a gay black man playing football, Erwin 2000s. Wasn't easy. I lost a career, a multimillion-dollar career at that, but I lost a career, and I had to settle for second fiddle. But I did not take second fiddle from anyone. I decided that I was going to put my head down, and I was going to do the work that it would take. Eventually, the NFL has a pride parade, excuse me, they have a pride flag during the New York Pride Parade, and that was a big step. And when Troy Vincent, a devout Christian, asked me what he should do, I said, Troy, treat people with respect. Now that I'm here at Prosper, I'm doing something a little bit different, still taking chances, and it's in the cannabis industry. The cannabis sector, where over 395 companies here in the City of Portland are either retailers, processors, growers, or even wholesalers. Those people will employ over 20,000 people. You say that, 385 to 395 retailers, storefront owners, processors will employ over 20,000 people, and those businesses are struggling every day. And for the first time, by mistake, or no, not by mistake, due to decreased cannabis tax revenue, the seed program in which I originally managed has had to sunset, budget cuts. But we are still committed to those 395 businesses, those 20,000 employees, and that's because they've moved my position over to the liaison for the industry that will work directly with those companies. We have an opportunity to do something really cool here in Portland. We are scaling for the future. We have a cash crop that will make us all very, 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 very happy. Trust me, very happy. This past year, we continue to build, and it is because of the team that I have here at Prosper, the people that I've met here at Prosper, and the community I have here at Prosper. We may face our challenges, but we ultimately have to continue to move forward. Prosper is a great place to work. I want people to hear that, and I want you all to know that as a union member, I stand in solidarity with my brothers and sisters and my siblings of all kinds, and I hope that you guys as well will stand with us and say, let's get this thing done, because ultimately, the work is way more important than the thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to both of you for joining us today. Appreciate it. Pam, do we have any other testimony today, public testimony? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, we have the consent agenda. There are quite a few items on the consent agenda, but I understand that we can take them all just with one vote. So maybe what I'll do is, I don't even think I need to read off the resolution numbers. We just... A motion and a second, and we vote. So who would like to make a motion to approve the various resolutions under the consent agenda?
I so move.
I so second.
Thank you. All right. Any comment? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Passes unanimously. Okay. Next up, we're going to adjourn the Prosper Portland Board Meeting and convene the Annual Portland Community Investment Fund Board Meeting. So Casey Edmondson is going to join us, and this is an action item confirming the identities of the directors of the corporation. Welcome, Casey.
Thank you, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham. Good afternoon. Unfortunately, we couldn't add this one to the consent agenda as well because you are convening this meeting, as you just mentioned, as, in your capacity as a director of the Portland Community Investment Fund. So I'm just going to briefly recap what that is and the reason why we're doing this very brief action today. Portland Community Investment Fund is a, an Oregon nonprofit corporation that enjoys federal tax-exempt status that Prosper Portland created round about 2016 to 2017 in the course of setting up a community development entity to apply for allocations of new markets, tax credit, allocations from the Department of the Treasury. It did so three times. None of those applications led to an allocation, but this entity still exists as a legal matter and would still be positioned with its eligibility as a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt organization, and having checked all the boxes and been created in the right way, would still be eligible to apply for those allocations in the future, were staff and the board to determine that that was a prudent strategy or that there was a good opportunity for that in the future. So as an active nonprofit corporation, even though there's no pending applications, there are annual meeting requirements, and we do, in the bylaws, require an annual meeting to be held whenever there has been a change in the directorship of Prosper Portland. Prosper Portland Commissioners are automatically directors of PCIF unless they choose not to be, and so we feel like it's important to inform all of you that you have this status and to educate you about the existence of this organization and why it was created and the fact that it is still currently lying dormant for the next good investment opportunity. So the action today is simply to confirm the identities of the directors of PCIF, which are the Commissioners of Prosper Portland, and there's nothing further in the action. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? No? All right. Well, would somebody like to make a motion to, to approve Resolution Number Six of PCIF?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Six.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. So now, we will adjourn the Portland, the Portland Community Investment Fund Board Meeting and reconvene the Prosper Portland Board Meeting. So welcome back. This next item is the election of officers. This is an annual thing we do every year. So as required by Prosper Portland bylaws, next, we will affect the officer positions of Chair, Vice Chair, and Treasurer. Would anybody like to make a motion to do so?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Tava Cruz as Chair, Serena Stoudamire Wesley as Vice Chair, and Marcelina Alvarez as Treasurer.
Second.
Question?
I'd say I appreciate you all stepping up to do this work.
Just you wait.
In these positions. Thank you so much for your service.
All right, then. Great. Okay. And are we ready to vote, then? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those are our officers for the year. Thank you. And thank you for your comments. Okay, next up, we have an action item. This is delegating limited-purpose expenditure authority to the Executive Director for the 2024-25 Portland Winter Ice Ring Project. And Amanda Park will present by Zoom, and Burke Nelson is in person. Welcome, Burke.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Director Branham. We're here to talk about... We're here to talk about our upcoming plan for the winter ice rink for 2425. As I said, my name is Burke Nelson. I'm the manager for the Office of Events and Film. With me, via maybe satellite, we have Amanda Park, and she's going to share some of the data about the rink. But I want to share some of the highlights. So in 2023, our office wanted to provide a unique experience in downtown that brought joy to the city, attracted families, and had an economic impact during the holiday season. Hosted by the Portland Events and Film Office at Prosper Portland, the Portland Winter Ice Rink and Woodsy Winter Village's inaugural season was nothing short of a resounding success. It was a bright spot during the winter and served as a galvanizing event for the city. Located on the Portland waterfront at the Morrison Bridgehead, the Winter Ice Rink converted an underutilized city property into an exciting new outdoor winter recreation opportunity with expansive views of the Willamette River during the day and twinkling lights at night. The accompanying Woodsy Winter Village offered visitors a place to warm up with rotating food concession vendors and ample activation space for movie nights. At this time, I would like to pass it to my colleague Amanda Park to share some data about the impact that the rink had on the city.
Thank you, Burke. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Executive Director Branham. Next slide. Today, we are requesting an increased expenditure authority for the Executive Director to award a contract for the Portland Winter Ice Rink. The request for proposals open June 14th and will close tomorrow, July 11th. We hope to have a contractor selected by the end of the month. Next slide. In alignment with Advanced Portland's strategic goals, the Portland Winter Ice Rink is an economic development tool to foster vibrant central city and support reputation recovery by increasing foot traffic and elevating the reputation of Portland. Next slide. The rink debuted in 2023 in an effort to bolster the holiday shopping season and invite people to visit or revisit downtown Portland since the pandemic. The ice rink also provided a unique social media opportunities, thrusting central city into the spotlight and garnering goodwill and viral posts portraying a whimsical and lively city, with notable mention by The New York Times and dozens of earned media spots on all the local news outlets. The rink was open for nine weeks and drew 20,000 people. Post-event, Prosper Portland administered a guest feedback survey and received 110 responses. Fifty-eight percent said their perception of downtown had improved over the holiday season. Sixty-three percent said the Winter Ice Rink influenced their perception of the city. Next slide. For the 2024 season, the team has shifted operating dates to better align with school and holiday travel schedules slated to operate from November 16th this year through January 5th. It also remains a priority to leverage the rink as a tool to amplify the good work that is happening in the city over the holiday season, like the Win Big Campaign by Brooksmore Mortar, the Christmas tree lighting and other festivities that happen at the square, and the Christmas pop-up shops, just to name a few. We also hope to expand our shop and stay promotions, and of course, produce a uniquely Portland experience adorned with local art and small business vendors. Next slide. In the next few slides, I'll share an overview of the project financials and projections. Here you can see a snapshot of the funding sources. This year, we have a one-time general fund allocation where we've earmarked 150,000. We also have ARPA commercial activation funding that has carried over from last year. And we were awarded 100,000 from the Visitor Development Fund One-Time Strategic Reserves. We've carried over cash from our 2023 ice rink operations. Here you see we have a fairly low sponsorship goal, although we hope to raise closer to 100,000 this year. And using a conservative model, we have revenue projections at about $430,000. Next slide. Revenue projections were based on three scenarios. The first scenario that I ran was the rink operating at full capacity, 100%. Next, I did a model based on the trends from 2023, which amounted to about 80% capacity for the 2024 year. Here I have a 70% capacity model included, or 70% scenario included for our revenue projections. This is very conservative. I thought best to be conservative in this case. I felt 70% was a very attainable situation. I think also helpful to note is that if I'm looking at capacity needed to reach breakeven, we're looking at about 55% capacity over the operation of the rink to reach a breakeven point. Some interesting things to know about 2023, which helped to inform the projections for 2024. Seventy-five percent of the sales happened between December 16th and December 31st. The rink also operated at 100% capacity during that time. Sometimes it was more than 100%. We also had to close the rink for about two weeks in January due to inclement weather. The 2024 season is conservatively estimated at 70%, but I believe that will be closer to the 88% capacity mark, which would bring our revenue up to 538,000. You'll also see here that the ticket sales, average ticket price, was adjusted down for 2024. That's for a couple of reasons. The average ticket price is a blend of youth tickets, adult tickets, and promotions. On average, for 2023, we saw about 25% youth tickets and 75% adult tickets. I imagine for 2024, we might see a greater proportion of youth tickets, given the shift in the operation hours to align with school schedules. In addition, we're really hoping to lean in more to the shop and stay local promotions, which would then also reduce the ticket price, the average ticket price. Next slide. The design of the location, this would be like decorations, lighting, music, and then the daily operations and programming. Overall, there's a slight decrease in the project budget, not a lot, but a little bit. In 2023, for the site expenses, we had about $92,500 in expenses in '23 that we're not expecting to have in '24. That would be primarily water and power, primarily power, a little bit of water. Parks and Rec has some planned site improvements for the 2024 season, and that would include power, power access and water access, and potentially fencing as well. So that would be a significant, significant cost savings for us. I don't want to say unfortunately, but also, for the '24 season, the site is no longer considered a parking lot and is considered a commercial event space. And so, the permit fee has significantly increased from nothing. We paid nothing in '23, and we'll be paying about $75,000 this year for the permit for the space. This also, the $75,000 permit fee is a reduced fee because Prosper Portland is a city entity, or city-aligned entity. For '24, we also hope to see or expect to see some staffing efficiencies just based on the contract structure. In the '23 season, we had two, the Village, the Woodsy Winter Village and the Ice Rink were managed separately. This new contract structure, we're hoping to see that they'll be managed jointly so they can leverage some staffing that way. And also, we'll have enough lead time to ideally hire some of the key personnel roles locally. Because of the time crunch for the '23 season, we had to, we weren't able to fill all the roles with local folks. So if those two things come to fruition, we also think we'll have some savings there. And with, you know, with each year, the team learns more about how to structure the project and align priorities. And we really look forward to working closely with the selected contractor to ensure that the Portland Winter Ice Rink continues to support central city retailers and helps to increase leisure travelers to the city of Portland. Next slide. Are there any questions?
Thank you. That was a good presentation. Questions, comments?
Why is it that it went from a parking lot to a lot that we're getting charged from?
So when we, it's a great question. When we moved in, when we hosted the Winter Ice Rink last year in 2023, Parks had just acquired the site, I think, maybe a few months prior. So they were sitting on a parking lot. There was no infrastructure in place, and they weren't entirely, they were working through how to move that site forward. So we came in and they were able to let us use the space for free. And since then, they've discovered that it's a fantastic place to host events, and so they're investing into the infrastructure. And so that's why it's changed.
Okay. Do we pay for all of, do we, this seems like money shuffling to me. Like, the city pay, you know, the city is a huge part of Prosper's budget, and then we're going to pay them $75,000 for an event. What, last year I went to this event, I thought Parks was a sponsor of the event. Are they paying us a sponsorship fee for the event? Could that be $75,000?
Parks was not a sponsor last year. They let us use the space for free, so.
So they got their name on stuff. They in-kinded us? Could they in-kind us 75 grand this year? They're hard no on that? Okay.
But you mentioned that they are adding some infrastructure, correct?
Correct.
This is what that is really offsetting, I assume.
I think so, yes. What Parks has done in this fiscal year is they've updated their fee structure so that all Portland bureaus, city bureaus, and Prosper Portland included can access perks-managed event sites at a discounted rate. So the 75,000 is discounted by 50%, and that is what they've developed as their, like, structure for how they use their larger event spaces for the city.
What are the improvements?
They're putting in a lot of power. And then they're also going to, I don't know how much power, but it's a lot, enough for an ice rink. And then they're going to have accessible water. So last year, we were getting water from a fire hydrant, and then we would have the fire hose connected to a water tank. So this year, we won't have to do that. We'll just have like a regular hose bib that we can hook up to to get the water that we need. Last year, we had generators and fuel trucks coming in twice a week because they're going to have power on site. We won't have to do that. So there's still a cost savings for us. And I think Parks is looking at fencing the space as well.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Amanda, could you remind me when the storm was last, this, earlier this year, that closed down the ice rink for two weeks? Was that the very beginning of January?
Yeah, it was. It was like, I think it was, yeah, it was like the first, after the first week of January. It was right after the kids had gone back to school.
Okay. Do you know if the space is available for an extension, if you're seeing a huge amount of utilization through January 5th, which is, I think, the date that you had is the end of the ice rink? Because I'm just curious, since the storm kind of stopped the business earlier this year, we don't really know what the demand would have been after the first few days of January. So if we're seeing a ton of utilization, could we extend with Parks? Or do they have somebody else teed up?
Oh, I don't think they have anybody teed up. I think the opportunity to extend might be there. And in the event that we wanted to extend, I feel like there are opportunities to do that. We likely, unfortunately, what's challenging is that we would have to make the call before we know what business might be in January, because they'll begun scheduling the breakdown of the site probably two weeks into December. So we would have to make the call pretty early. But there is the opportunity to extend, if that was something that we decided to do.
And I guess they might charge us another $75,000 to do it.
So their fees are based on how many days you operate and how many days you're just on site. So days you're on site not operating the rink.
Okay.
There's a reduced fee, and then days that you're on site operating. There's a daily fee.
Oh, good. Okay, that's great. That was a joke. I was not trying to rip on Parks.
Related question. Are there any insurance policies that might be available or part of the program in case there is an extended outage due to unforeseen weather circumstances that might allow making an extension a little bit more economically feasible, or just recoup, you know, projected revenues if the snowstorm or a snowstorm were to hit in the middle of peak demand?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely something to look into. I know other cities have rain insurance for their ice rinks if they're not tinted. We, for this event, for the ice rink, we carry event insurance, and we've worked really closely with procurement to really find the best fit of insurance for this, for this activation. If we were looking to insure during January, yeah. So I think that's a great question, something to talk to procurement more about.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you for the presentation. It was great.
Yeah. No, thank you. Thank you. It was very informative. Learned a lot about ice rinks.
All right. I hope you get on the ice this coming winter.
Okay. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 7547, delegating the limited-purpose expenditure authority?
I'm with Resolution 7547, delegating extended expenditure activity. I second.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is an information item. This is an update on Prosper Portland's equity initiatives, and Chabri Vickers will lead this discussion, but we have quite a few other people who are also going to join us. Lonnie Bates, Jen Reyes, Kay Little, Wendy Wilcox, Deborah Lindsay, Karan Folsom, and Hope Whitney will all join us. So thank you. Welcome to everybody.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioner Slick, Alvarez, Stoudamire Wesley, and Hagens, and Director Branham. I'm Chabri Vickers, Director of the Equity Policy and Communications Department, and I'm joined, as you just mentioned, by a host of our colleagues who look forward to this annual process where we anchor ourselves in the board-adopted equity policy and share recent equity accomplishments, outcomes, learning, and our path forward. Next, oh, well, I guess you can start the slides. Great. We can go to the next slide. Justin, thank you. So as a reminder, Prosper Portland's, again, board-adopted equity policy has four primary objectives, and those, as you see here, are anti-racist internal practices, focused on our human resources, staff development and support, along with employee management that lead towards a healthy internal culture centered in learning. Next, advancing racial and economic equity through programs and investments that promote inclusive growth and address persistent disparities. Leveraging investments that support minority, disadvantaged, and women business enterprise firms, people of color and women in contracting opportunities. And lastly, prioritizing accountability and collaboration with underrepresented communities. Thank you so much, Justin, for making sure. Many of our slides are going to have lots of data, and so we want to make certain that you can see it close up. Thanks so much, Justin. So as we ground ourselves in the updates you will hear moving forward, it's important to remember the significance of celebrating collective accomplishments and allowing that excitement and energy to help motivate and allowing that excitement and energy to help motivate us, to help motivate us all, especially when this work becomes hard or is questioned. What we know to be true is that Portland does not fully recover, thrive, or flourish economically if we don't employ intentional practice, policy, and efforts that ensure true prosperity is accessible to all Portlanders. So I am extremely proud to hand over the next portion of our update to Melanie Bates, our racial equity and inclusion specialist, who will guide our colleagues. Next, Melanie, it's all yours.
All right, testing, excellent. Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham, I am Melanie Bates. I use she-they pronouns. I serve as the racial equity and inclusion specialist in the Equity Policy Communications Department. I also serve as the Equity Council Project Manager. For folks who are tuning in virtually and or in person, my image description is I am a black woman with light brown skin and waist-length black locks. Today, I'm wearing a nose ring and gold, large hoop rings, earrings, and a black cardigan. Commissioners, during this brief equity update, my colleagues and I will share updates and equity successes from the past fiscal year. Because our equity practices live across all departments here at Prosper Portland, you will hear from team members who will celebrate the good work that the teams have accomplished, share the disaggregated data by race where we have that information available to you all, and to highlight efforts to move our work forward collectively. Next slide, please, Justin, and I'll hand it over to my colleague, Jennifer Reyes.
Thanks, Melanie. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners and Executive Director Branham. My name is Jennifer Reyes. I'm a mixed-race woman with olive skin and a colorful shoulder-length hair. Today, I'm wearing round-shaped glasses and a tan jacket for those of you that are online or joining us virtually. I serve as one of the Inclusive Business Resource Network, or IBRN, project managers. I'd like to recognize my entrepreneurship and community economic development teammates, Dan Ruin, Angelica Butler, Morgan Masterman, and Connor Chapkus for gathering the data presented on the slide that you see today. The Portland Small Business Hub was launched in twenty-twenty-two with the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funding to provide immediate small business resource navigation and technical assistance. To date, the hub has served eight-hundred-seventy-three businesses in partnership with six community-based organizations. The Inclusive Business Resource Network formed in twenty-seventeen and started a new five-year grant cycle in October twenty-twenty-two. Within the new grant cycle, IBRN has served seven-hundred-forty small businesses through March twenty-twenty-four in partnership with twenty-four community-based organizations. Both IBRN and Hub community partners prioritize assistance for historically underserved small business owners. Our partnerships allow us to be connected to these communities and provide technical assistance in meaningful ways. The results of this work can be seen in the demographic breakdown on the slide. Our culturally specific partners include the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, or APONO, the Black American Chamber of Commerce, Hacienda Community Development Corporation, Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce, Immigrant and Refugee Community Organization, or ERCO, Native American Youth and Family Center, or NEA, and the Northwest Native Chamber. IBRN also partnered with the Philippine American Chamber of Commerce of Oregon, or PACO, to manage a one-time funded program providing additional professional services to stabilize and grow small businesses receiving assistance from either IBRN or Hub partners. A total of three-hundred-and-thirty-one small businesses were referred to professional services between February twenty-twenty-three and May twenty-twenty-four. Those services included legal support, human resources consulting and training, digital marketing coaching, financial modeling and forecasting, professional photography, landlord mediation, scholarships to Portland Community College business classes, and more. And many of those professional service providers were underrepresented small businesses here in the city. Within the network, IBRN also provides longer-term professional services focused on small business fiscal operations management, including coaching on personal finances, business bookkeeping, and assessing loan readiness for increased access to capital. One hundred and sixty-eight businesses were referred to these services since October twenty-twenty-two. Technical assistance with access to specific professional services allows business owners to get the help they need for their unique stage of business. When surveyed, one business owner noted, quote, "I appreciate that I can tailor the services received by what my current needs are for my business." In the most recent annual IBRN survey, respondents were asked to name the top three challenges for running and growing their businesses. Respondents identified marketing, business operations, and finance as the top three challenges. A bookkeeping small business owner shared their past year's success was aided by the referrals to the one-time funded program. Quote, "My business's gross revenue more than doubled last year. I accessed professional services through MISO's partnership with the city, or Prosper Portland, and I found the referrals I've received through MISO very helpful. These have included legal contract reviews, financial planning, and HR support because I'm planning to hire in twenty-twenty-four." Through IBRN quarterly outcome surveys, small business owners shared similar responses. Quote, "My advisor had helped connect me with some incredible free financial resources that are helping me better my personal finances in preparation and success in my business financials. Since starting the program, my credit score has increased from six forty-five to seven fourteen." Exclamation point. Another client also said, "I received incredibly valuable assistance for my business with the staff explaining in clear and understandable manner. They made complex concepts such as filling out a P and L sheet and running a small business easy to understand. I learned essential skills that will significantly help improve my business operations. I now feel much more confident and capable in managing my business effectively." Through this work, we've learned that, that navigation is helpful, and with long-term technical assistance, even more skills are gained. Seventy-four percent of Hub survey respondents said they gained knowledge from navigation assistance, and eighty-six percent of IBRN survey respondents gained skills while working with long-term business advisors. Our team will continue to leverage quarterly and annual survey feedback to ensure programming is responsive to the evolving needs of community and to advocate for small business owner support. Thank you, and next I'll pass it off to Kay Little, Wendy Wilcox, and Deborah Lindsay for the development investment update. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham. My name is Kay Little. I am the Asset and Investment Manager at Prosper Portland. For those online who cannot see me, I'm a black man with a big shiny bald head, clear glasses, and more gray in my beard than I would like to acknowledge. I am here to talk to you about our financial assistance programs and how well they performed during twenty-twenty-three. Always starting with our Prosperity Investment Program Grant, which we also call our PIP Grant. This is a matching grant that helps tenants and property owners to complete tenant improvements and other improvements to buildings. Last year, we funded one-point-three-million dollars worth of grants. And that was a total of fifty-five grants that were awarded, awarded to us business owners and property owners. So that was a really strong year. Seventy-four percent of that funding went out to BIPOC-owned businesses. So that's something that was really noticeable, or notable in our performance. I'll then move to our lending program. We also had a very strong year there. That was really aided a lot by the fact that the lending markets are pretty sluggish now. And so we had a number of businesses that approached us for financing. Last year, we funded over nine million dollars in loans to small businesses, a combination of real estate loans and business loans. We did a total of twenty-two loans last year. Fifty-four percent of that funding went to BIPOC-owned businesses. Couple of notable loans for us was we funded a middle-income housing project that is developed by two, by a woman-led development firm. And we also funded a BIPOC-owned food hall that is being constructed on the ground floor of the Ritz Carlton. So we were really happy with that activity. Next, I'll talk about our teneting. Here, we also had a good year. We had had some struggles, especially during the pandemic, and it was very difficult to lease up some of our spaces. But one of the more notable successes that we had has to do with the Nick Fish. That project was completed in twenty-twenty-one. Prosper Portland owns the retail on the ground floor. We have eleven spaces there. Five of those spaces, we are now leasing to a daycare facility that will take up that five of those spaces. And then the Office of Civic Life also has a space, so that building is now fifty-seven percent occupied. Also, Ten Y, we were pretty successful in, in at least keeping that space activated. We have a master lease with P-Bot, and so we had pop-ups in there. We also have some long-term tenants that we were able to assist and keep them there during COVID. As a matter of fact, our first tenant in the space is actually now expanding into an adjoining space. And we are now in the process of handing the leasing of those spaces back to P-Bot. And so we won't be responsible for that much longer. But that was something that we were able to try to keep going during the, during the last few years. And then also, one more note is that Lin's Commons, we have four commercial spaces there. We had one tenant that was a yoga studio that started leasing right during the pandemic. We had three vacant spaces. Well, two of those spaces, we now have a tenant that will be opening a bike shop in there. So now we have one vacant space at Lin's Commons, so we're very happy about that. So now I will turn the presentation over to my colleagues, Deborah and Wendy.
Thank you, Kay. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, and Director Branham. I'm happy to be here today. Oh, and for those that are not here, I am a white woman. I have glasses and a blue cardigan and long hair, I guess. So in the first part of twenty-twenty-four, we completed Prosper Portland's site preparation activities at the post office site as part of the first phase of the Broadway Corridor development. All of the four projects, the USPS relocation, the vehicle demo, the site work and soil remediation, and the P and D C demo, were very successful at meeting and surpassing our goals. With almost thirty-six million dollars contracted, ninety-three percent of those dollars went to COVID-certified firms, and the majority of those were minority firms. Twenty-four percent of the hours were worked by apprentices. Seventy percent of the hours were worked by BIPOC. Twenty percent of the hours were worked by women. Some of the factors that played into the success of these projects, we did some debriefs after, and one of the major comments was the CMGC contracting method, the intentionality and teamwork on the part of the construction project team leadership, and the Labor Management Oversight Community Committee, which provided additional assistance and accountability. Pass it on to my colleague, Deborah.
Thank you, Wendy. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Kimberly Branham. I'm Deborah Lindsay, the Construction Business and Workforce Equity Project Manager in the Development and Investments Department here at Prosper under the management of Brian Moore. Over the past year, we've placed a hundred and twenty-four million dollars in construction opportunities, professional services, and construction tied to Prosper Portland and public and private projects. Our business equity outcomes reflect forty-seven million or thirty-eight percent MBE, six million or five percent WBE, five million or four percent ESB, and sixty-seven million or fifty-four percent non-certified firms. Our workforce equity outcomes reflect twenty-seven, three-hundred-and-twenty-seven million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven total hours worked. Sorry, three-hundred-and-twenty-seven, nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven total hours worked. Fifty-two percent minority, forty-eight percent Caucasian, thirteen percent female, and eighty-seven percent male. In consideration of time, Wendy will talk about the apprenticeship hours achievement when she discusses our outcomes by project. We approach business workforce equity in two distinct ways. One focused on small business and the other focused on individual workers and their appearance, their experience on job sites. With business equity, we engage BIPOC and women-owned businesses through our construction equity partners. Through our partners, we help to get BIPOC businesses ready to bid and work on prosper various construction projects. Through a technical assistance grant agreement, our partners work with with companies to obtain assistance with administrative, reporting, and business practices in addition to project equity programs and goals implementation and compliance technical assistance. These organizations offer their members high-level networking events with public owners, general contractors, and developers, training in construction-related software, accounting, marketing, proprietary products, hiring, HR navigation, apprentice requests, et cetera, mentoring opportunities with seasoned professionals in both public and private businesses. These services are offered at a low, or in most cases, no cost to to minority firms. Prosper has opportunities to speak to their members and promote our projects at their events. When Prosper projects are ready to be put out to bid, these companies are better prepared to perform at their highest level. Workforce development is related to the people working on our projects. It has been a regional effort. Most of all of our owners use the same people through our participation in the Construction Careers Pathway Program, C two P two, now referred to as the Regional Workforce Collaborative, or RCC, or RWA. We have created a baseline with regional partners. The regional effort consolidates our ability to create a common language, job-site culture standards, and reporting metrics that remain consistent from one project to the next. It also gives us the ability to engage our spending power and focus them on critical apprenticeship programs that have proven to be the best outcomes for BIPOC and female, to produce the best outcomes for BIPOC and female workers wanting to enter the construction industry. Each of the participating members of the regional collaborative have shared their challenges and successes in helping to develop the kind of diverse workforce we want to see on our projects. Although we customize the regional effort to the specific needs of our individual agencies, we are able to strategically guide resources to the place and spaces and new BIPOC and female workers that will benefit the most. As seen on Slide five, we achieved and exceeded our goals on Prosper own-supported projects. We are having good impacts because we also have equity requirements for our private sector projects, which generally do not require or have equity goals. The data demonstrates that our programs are impactful and necessary. Our CWBE policy is a living document. We have heard the board's desire and are going forward. And going forward, we will consistently disaggregate our data to provide a clearer review of our achievements and support the dismantling of systemic and historical marginalize, marginalization in contracting and workforce development opportunities. Light six. Our policy requirements and goals.
Justin, go back.
Oh, six.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our apprenticeship goals require that twenty percent labor hours in each apprenticeship trade with three hundred hours or more are performed by prime and subcontractors are performed with state-approved apprentices. Our workforce equity goals require that thirty percent of hours are worked by minorities and fifteen percent of hours are worked by women apprentices, both journey and apprentices. The pie chart disaggregates minority workforce data on our projects over the past year and demonstrate and demonstrates that because I can't see it. One percent Native American and demonstrates the disaggregation of one percent Native American, three percent Asian, thirty-nine percent Latino, seven percent African American, forty-eight percent white, and two percent other. Most projects are exceeding our goals. And now I'm going to refer to my colleague Wendy Wilcox. She'll speak to us about the specific project outcomes.
Thanks, Deborah. So the projects on the right-hand side of the screen were the ones that were active this year. were the ones that were active this year, various forms of being active. So first of all, with the bakery block, that is a property that we sold to a developer. It was a very small project. It achieved nine percent apprentice. When we measure that every contract of a hundred thousand or more, it applies. And we follow them to get the minority and women numbers as well. So but if they work under three hundred hours, then it really doesn't apply to them. But we still, I don't know, we for years have just done all of it. And now we're starting to wonder, if we take out the ones that didn't work the three hundred hours, what is the actual? So the actual would be eighteen percent there for apprentice instead of the nine percent. So they were pretty much in compliance. I just want to say that. So then for minority workers, they were at forty-four percent, and they were pretty short on women at three percent. River Place Parcel Three is another land sale that I think it was Home Forward that did this. They were in closeout this year. This was part of the South Waterfront project agreement, or at least they had an LM-COC, basically. And they did pretty well, twenty-three percent, forty-seven percent minority, and eleven percent women. The demo project closed at the beginning of this year with twenty-three percent apprentice, seventy-five percent minority, and really nice score for women at twenty-two percent. We'd really like to see more of that. At the Fairfield Hotel, which is, they're still under construction. They're almost complete. And that's another project that we have money into and that we're eventually going to be buying the commercial spaces there. They have achieved twenty percent apprentice, fifty-two percent minority, and thirteen percent women. And basically, some of the takeaways from this year are, we really need to keep doing, we're doing better with minority. We really need to see more women in the trades. And also, we're trying to learn more about smaller projects, size of projects with the workforce training and hiring goals. And so we have a new change in our policy. And so we'll be monitoring that throughout the year, how that affects these numbers. Thank you. Hand it back to you.
Yeah, sure.
Do you mind if I ask a question, Wendy, on this? On these numbers around the bakery blocks or River Place on these projects, do you disaggregate this data by job as well?
Yes, it's disaggregated by trade.
It's disaggregated by trade?
Yes.
And that's in the packet somewhere?
No, it's not. But I'm happy to provide that reporting at any time. We work with the city of Portland. They take in reporting through B2G Now and LCP Tracker. So I receive monthly reports on LCP Tracker that I'm happy to share at any time.
I would love, I just personally would love to see this by trade because I worry when you look at this, like, the demo site has seventy-five percent minority participation. And oftentimes, that's because minorities are in lower-paying demolition jobs and not in our higher-paying electrical, plumbing, engineering jobs. And so it would be great to see this broken out by job so we can figure out, maybe we focus on moving people from those demolition jobs into different jobs.
That's, thank you very much for that. And that can happen. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Our business equity goals are twenty-two percent of hard construction costs allocated to certified firms with fourteen percent to any combination of DVE and MBE firms. Twenty percent of an applicable project's professional service costs are allocated to certified firms. The Construction Business and Workforce Equity Policy requires that twenty-two percent of the dollars spent on sponsored construction projects go to COVID-certified DMW ESP firms. This tracking is done through the City Procurement Office, as Wendy was speaking about B2G Now and LCP Tracker. And fiscal year 2023, a hundred and twenty-four million dollars in construction costs were tracked. We exceeded our policy equity goals with forty-seven percent of the hundred and twenty-four million hard construction costs going to certified firms. This includes forty-seven million or thirty-eight percent allotted to minority construction firms. This aggregated data demonstrates that African-Americans, fifteen thousand, fifty million and nine hundred and, fifteen million, ninety-one thousand and ninety-five dollars to African-Americans with twenty, or twenty-six percent. Eight million and sixty-five thousand and eighty-four dollars to Asian ethnicity are thirteen percent. Native Americans with eighteen million, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five, or thirty-one percent. Others were identified on the chart at seventy-five, at seven thousand, five hundred, or zero percent. Whites at nine million, four hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars, or sixteen percent. Wendy, I'll talk about the projects that this data reflects.
In addition to the workforce projects mentioned on the last slide, these hard construction numbers also include the Happy Go Lucky Daycare Prosper Portland Project at the Nick Fish, which is currently going on. Short Stack Mississippi, which is also still in construction. It's a housing project. And Flock Food Hall, which I believe Kay kind of mentioned as well. All three of those projects are currently in construction and are reflected here. I do want to point out that the Native American number, the thirty-one percent, is a pretty big number. And that is very reflective of the USPS demo project. I just want to call attention to that.
Thank you for the opportunity to present our 2023 Construction Business and Workforce Equity outcomes.
Can I say thank you for breaking that out in the demographics so that we can actually see the numbers and not grouping them all together? Appreciate it.
Good afternoon. Chair Cruz, Prosper Board Commissioners, Executive Branham. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. My name is Karan Folsom. I'm your Chief Administrative Officer here at Prosper Portland. I am a light caramel complexioned black woman with blonde curly hair, black-rimmed glasses, a navy-blue polka dot dress, and maroon-colored lips. The areas within my department are business operations, where we have the facilities, information technology, procurement, records, document management, risk management, as well as our finance department and our human resources department. The Administrative Services Department has strived to position itself as the internal-facing care partner for the outward-facing departments within the agency. Our most important goal is to provide Prosper Portland staff, as well as our external patrons, with the accurate and efficient services while ensuring consistency and equitable support across the board. We take pride in our collective work to ensure that the agency is running at full and optimal capacity. There are very real ways to account for equity within the internal operations, and the ASD works hard to exemplify equitable practices daily. And now we'll look at the slide. The procurement and finance department have worked collaboratively to track COBID Certification Office for Business Inclusion and Diversity vendors for our organization. During the 2023-2024 fiscal year, our estimated total spend was over twenty-five point nine million. And of that, over seventeen point five million was spent with COBID-certified organizations. In addition, the procurement and finance teams provided a series of trainings, agency-wide, to ensure that our staff know how to create purchase orders, how to pay our bills within our ERP system, Microsoft Dynamics 365, approval of our procurement card training, travel and training, as well as our Info Labs, which is how to review the data within our systems, Crystal Reports, and Microsoft Dynamics 365. The IT department assists to ensure that all of these systems are easily accessible and essentially assist us with keeping the lights on across the agency by ensuring our hardware and our software are properly deployed and accounted for. The Human Resources Department provides an ongoing, full-cycle, inclusive recruitment improvements. We have engaged with workplace change to conduct an HR assessment so that we could ensure that we are properly moving forward with our hiring of the executive that Director Branham spoke about earlier, onboarding revamped for efficient and effective new hire experience. We're ensuring that our onboarding is making certain that all of the various departments across the agency are touching the new hires as they come into our operations, ensuring that they have clarity around how to engage at the agency level, but also at their department level. So they have clarity around how to execute their jobs within at least the first two weeks of their time here at the agency. We're also implementing a learning management system, which is no before. We also have implemented a cyber training system, which is also under no before, where we will ensure that we are properly supported to mitigate any cyber or ransomware attacks at the agency. We are also in the process of creating a complaint form. There will be an electronic form for staff to be able to engage in an anonymous manner so they have the opportunity to obtain the type of supports that they feel that they need from the agency. And we have that procedure in progress. We're very excited to deploy that soon. The data that is listed above is calendar year 2023. I will also talk about the June first, January first, I'm sorry, January first through June 2024. We have worked hard to create a dynamic and a staffing environment at Prosper Portland that is diverse, that is inclusive, that is supportive. We want to ensure that we have a healthy culture at the agency. For calendar year 23, we have hired twenty-two new individuals within the organization. Of those twenty-two new hires, fifty percent were women, forty-five percent were men, and five percent were self-described. The demographic highlights below, you'll see here, Asian at ten percent, Black and African-American at thirty-one percent, Latino at ten percent, white at twenty-six percent, and two or more races, ten percent, and we have thirteen percent who have not disclosed. For the numbers for January one through June 30, 2024, we have had one intern to come into our organization. We have had one promotion. We have had eight reclassifications as a result of the 2023 compensation study and also the normal reclassification process at Prosper Portland. We have three positions currently posted. And by Monday, June 22nd, we will have a total of six positions posted. And we are looking to hire ultimately about twenty-two positions over the next six months. And that will bring us to a total of a hundred and five positions at Prosper Portland. Thank you. I'm handing it off over to our General Counsel, Hope Whitney.
Great, thank you, Karan. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Executive Director Branham. I'm Hope Whitney, General Counsel of Prosper Portland. And with Deputy Attorneys David Kosch and Casey Edmondson, as well as our support staff Frederick Davis Brown and Karen Harris, we make up Prosper Portland's legal team. Before I present this slide, I would just mention that the legal team brings an equity lens to all of the work that we do on behalf of Prosper Portland. For example, if we're reviewing an agreement, we'll ask if the contract we're working on is accessible to its audience, you know, obviously calibrated to protect Prosper Portland from unreasonable risks, but without being overly burdensome or confusing to the other parties who ultimately we're trying to help. So we bring to bear all of our legal training and our creativity to advance Prosper Portland's mission. And three examples of this approach are on this slide. First, program income. You know, this is the revenue that we make from our property holdings and our loans. Through close analysis of ORS 457, which is our authorizing statute, and of our charter, we provided a legal opinion that is the basis of the creation of our strategic investment fund and its availability throughout the city for investments targeted at eliminating racial disparities. In addition, we were not caught flat-footed and rather proactively identified the implications of the Supreme Court's ban on affirmative action last summer. After the ruling, many unfortunately tried to downplay the decision as limited to the realm of university admissions, a view that has not prevailed since in our federal courts. Instead, your legal team worked tirelessly and carefully to understand the implications of that decision in order to develop a legal strategy and approach that allows Prosper Portland's work to combat racial disparities, to continue in compliance with law. I'm very proud of this work. It is the legal basis of Prosper Portland's guidance to staff last October, explaining how to do our work following that unfortunate decision. And it's as well the basis for our equity administrative procedures adopted this past March. These administrative procedures have embedded within them a sequence analysis, which operationalizes this legal strategy and provides staff with a methodology to address racial disparities in compliance with law. Chabri is going to be talking about that sequence analysis a little later. And finally, the legal team, specifically Casey Edmondson, who you met earlier, made critical contributions to the development of Prosper Portland's new loan guidelines recently approved by you all and which center equity. The last part of this slide mentions the, mouthful here, Committee for Accountability of Finances and Equity, which we call CAFE. CAFE is an internal committee that scrutinizes all of our financial, well, many of our financial investments. And equity is an essential part of this scrutiny. As General Counsel, I'm a member of this committee, and I'm currently serving as its chair. So I would like to recognize and appreciate Commissioner Slick for her contributions to CAFE. So thank you, Chair Cruz and Commissioners, and I will pass it back to Melanie and Chabri. Just kidding.
No, it is. Okay, let me go back up. All right, so this slide represents the Equity Policy and Communications Department that Chabri and I will speak on collaboratively. The first piece of our work that's identified by the E is equity. And so the equity framework is a foundational text that illustrates our commitment to racial equity. First developed in 2018 and revised in 2020, the Equity Team is working to update the equity framework to prioritize and embed individual and organizational anti-racist best practices. We plan to engage a consultant to work alongside us to support aspects of the framework that need to be refreshed. So it's really exciting work that we're going to be doing, continuing to do. Chabri?
Yeah, thank you so much, Melanie. I, as I step into the Policy and Communications portion of our department, I first just want to share a moment of gratitude for the leadership of the Policy and Communications Team in our department for their work to prepare our first State of the Portland Economy, which will come out in the next few weeks. It will highlight Portland-specific economic data down to the neighborhood level, but also disaggregates our data and outcomes by race, when available, and area of the city to ensure our work is transparent and accessible for all Portlanders. In particular, I'd like to just say a special kudos to Faith Aiken, Christian Kaler, Allison Swiger, Lisa Norwood, Yume Delagato, Justin Douglas, and Sean Ullman for your leadership and labor to make this report a reality. Our communications team continues to move forward deep accessibility efforts while ensuring website and collateral content is delivered in the five most utilized languages across our city. In addition, Melanie Bates and Lisa Norwood have taken a leadership role for Prosper on the city's Language Access Work Group to ensure we can meet the city's goals around information and accessibility. This work was highlighted in the effort to launch our Winter Storm Recovery Grant efforts and overall website, which is updated, and in the midst, actually, of being updated to advance accessibility for individuals, especially those using screen readers and needing additional accommodations. It's also important to highlight the incredible work of members across many departments who are leading to be intentional around centering priority communities in the TIF exploration. are leading to be intentional around centering priority communities in the TIF exploration process and Gateway Action Plan update. I want to name in particular Dana Decline, Roger Gonzalez, Catherine Hartinger, Sarah Harple, Kiana Ballow, and Joel Devilcourt for their really distinct work to ensure that we understand what our priority communities need as it relates to communications in those efforts. And lastly, on the right side of the slide, we are truly excited about the work the new division within our department has done to launch the Reimagine Oregon Economic Opportunity Investment Fund. You all heard of that recently. I want to name and thank Vicky Schafferman, Daniel Tay, and Trevor A. Brandon for their leadership and labor in awarding over $6.3 million in grants to create economic opportunity for communities who've been disproportionately impacted by cannabis prohibition. This incredible work done to center community voice, perspective, and advice into the launch of this new program is absolutely worthy of appreciation and celebration. We look forward to future opportunities to share more about that work and the impact across Portland at future board meetings, so more to come on that. Next slide, please. As you heard General Counsel Hope Whitney share earlier, her team was able to help us develop a legal strategy consistent with law that helps us continue to advance equity, and operationalizing those efforts was a highlight of my time working alongside our management and coordination teams here at Prosper this past year. Not because the work was easy, but because through collective expertise and an understanding of our goals, we were able to move forward programs that help more Portlanders be a part of the economic growth and prosperity we work towards every day, especially that which is called for in Advance Portland. As mentioned when I opened today, our equity policy identifies the need for staff and leadership to manage all programs and investments that consider beneficiaries, address disparities, and support equitable outcomes. And so to implement thoughtful program and product design, we use a racial equity sequence protocol that helps us consider this work moving forward. And so, you know, what you see here is really, really helps us to identify our strategic objectives and supportive data of these new efforts. We then move to identifying systemic barriers to those objectives, which help us identify measures of success by better understanding indicators of those barriers and how program design can impact change. Overall, this helps us execute contracts and agreements centering our effort to impact systemic barriers that may stand in the way of our strategic objectives. And overall, what this allows us to do is to evaluate and consider investments aligned with our goals and in ways that we know can impact Portlanders in a positive way, excuse me, in positive ways to ensure we can all be a part of the economic prosperity as we revitalize our economy. And so huge appreciation to Hope and the legal team for the legal strategy and to our management and coordination team for their efforts to collectively think through how we can still reach our goals. Next slide, please. So as we think about questions, I just want to take a moment to thank Jen Reyes, Kay Little, Deborah Lindsay, Wendy Wilcox, Karan Folsom, Hope Whitney, for joining Melanie and I today to keep you all updated on how we live equity and the work we do every day. And before we take your final questions, I do want to highlight a very special update with equity in mind. So at this year's Power Conference that you heard Melanie mention, the Power Conference, Prosper Portland was awarded the Game Changer Award. It's sharp, but it's here. And this award was given by Workplace Change in partnership with Portland Business Journal and was celebrated in a special edition publication that I have here in my hand with a multiple-page spread. And we were also featured in a video interview with Cirilde Summers-McGee, founder and CEO of Workplace Change, as she discussed our previous issues with equity and trust in community and the way we were working, the game-changing way, excuse me, we were working to shift and how that has impacted Portlanders over the past few years, and that work, which has been game-changing for our community members. I, in particular, want to add special thanks to both Robert Smith and Kay Little, again, also Executive Director Branham, who joined me while taking part in that video, which truly felt like a transformational discussion, with community members who have been watching our work, with community members who are from Portland, in particular, Black community members who watched how we are shifting our efforts, our policy, and our practice. And I think what you've seen from the folks who've joined us here today is that this work and this award belongs to the efforts of all staff at the agency, and as you have no doubt seen in our presentation today, we are excited about this work moving forward, and we are excited about how we continue to learn how to do this work at the highest level on behalf of Portlanders. So once again, we're ready to take any questions you have and certainly appreciate your attention today.
Great presentation, thank you, and congratulations on the award, too. That's terrific. So do you have any questions or comments?
I just want to commend the team. I hope mentioned that I've been participating in CAFE, and I've had the chance to spend time with so many of you. Shelley, you and I spent a couple of hours, I think it was two weeks ago, going through the workforce and construction equity documents together with Brian and Lisa, and I just, I want to just say out loud how impressed I am by the depth of talent on the team, and a lot of that is really attributable to the leadership at Prosper, including you, Kimberly. So I just want to note that and congratulate all of you. This is a tremendous amount of accomplishment that you guys have presented, and I'm really grateful for all the work that you're doing and hope for all the risk that you're managing with your team.
All right, well, thank you so much, really. We greatly appreciate the update, and we look forward to this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so next, I have a quick note. The Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners' regular meeting is now adjourned, and we will reconvene in an executive session. So we'll take a very short break, and then we'll reconvene. What's that? Yes, actually, we'll do about three, three to four minutes. How about that?
I had a few, I don't think they're super, super impactful, but I, some things that I've been discussing with folks one-on-one. The first was, and I brought this up, I think, with Kimberly and with Justin and also with you, Chair Cruz. I was curious if we could look at, and I was curious to get feedback also from the other board members, if this would be helpful, to have a chart or a one-page summary of Prosper's work, because I'm realizing that when I have to explain or answer a question to somebody who doesn't know the breadth of Prosper's work, which frankly, I think the vast majority of people in Portland do not know everything that Prosper does, I often feel really ill-equipped to give a really good, comprehensive, and succinct summary of all the things that we do. And I'm a pretty visual person, so I was kind of envisioning in my mind like a chart of the work, and specifically, I think we have some charts that describe strategic efforts, but I know at least a lot of the folks that I speak with on the business community side, like, kind of tangible, like what is actually being done, and so I think it'd be helpful to have some of the initiatives associated with those strategic efforts detailed out or, you know, examples that we can speak to that might help us be better ambassadors for the agency. So that was kind of, and I know I'm asking staff who's already overburdened to do more work, so I wanted to make sure that I wasn't asking for something that was only going to benefit me, so wanted to bring it up with the group.
I think that's a great idea, along with maybe a five-minute elevator speech on top of that.
Sorry, I think, I think we actually did talk about having a one-pager or two-pager or something like that way back when, and I think, like, one of our strategies was to hand people the strategic plan at one point. Every now and then, somebody really wants detail and depth and doesn't understand what's going on. Think, but it's, you know, how old is our strategic plan now? It's been a little while, so things, conditions have changed.
It has, and I think, yeah, I think-
Something like that.
Totally.
Yeah, yeah.
I think having, I'm probably the most recently gone through my orientation, which was like last week. I actually think the folder that was provided in my orientation that Justin put together has a lot of those, like, baseline materials that we could be looking for, and so if I recall, I thought there was like a PowerPoint in it that sort of outlined, outlined all of those things, so maybe that just shrunken down so we don't have to, like, reinvent the wheel, but it's in there. And so I don't, is that, does everybody have access? I'm asking you, Justin, does everybody? Okay.
That's something that the new commissioners have, and it's updated whenever we have new commissioners. Chair Cruz, you probably haven't seen that for eight years, so.
Nine years.
Nine years, correct. So, but I could recirculate that, that's a good idea.
Yeah, so I think it's probably, like, out of people's minds, but it's really great. So.
That would be great, and I think there's some detail, like, I don't know if it's dollar figures or specific efforts that would be really good, and I think it's an opportunity also for us to curate how we message our work externally, and so I want to be thoughtful about how we do it, and it'd be great if we were all doing it with a similar voice, because that consistency, I think, would be really good externally as well, so I'd love to get on the same page about how we kind of talk about our work.
Yeah.
The second thing I had was, I know that we talked quite a bit at the board retreat about the new city form of government and the kind of unknown, I don't want to say toll, because that sounds really negative, but the amount of work that the team could potentially have to undertake to really manage the larger council and kind of the unknowns of it, and was curious if, and it doesn't have to be today, but at some point, to get an update when it's pertinent about how we're thinking about approaching that, especially as things kind of, I guess, shake out or settle down a little bit with how things are actually rolling out.
I don't understand the discussion a little bit, so like, I know that there's, I obviously know that there's a massive change happening at the city. I think that the current status is going to be status quo for the next year, so has the board had an update on the current status, like with Donnie Olivera taking over that role and how they've divided out the bureaus under those bureau things? And then when the new council comes on, are you talking about, like, a year from now or are you talking about the current status?
At the board, Kimberly, you're welcome to respond to it, too.
Yeah, I think, I think we were, so at the board retreat, we talked about just what are the kind of major, what are some key contextual things that we need to keep in mind as we're thinking about our work plan for the year ahead? And so we were talking about economic trends, we were talking about our kind of workforce dynamics and workload issues, and then we talked about just the implications from a workload standpoint and from a, mainly from a workload standpoint in terms of what it was going to mean to have 12 new council members-
Oh, 12 people instead of five.
-instead of five, and what that was going to mean for briefings, and also having 12 new commissioners or council members, rather, who are all being on-boarded at the same time, and the workload associated with that. So the update that I can give on that is twofold. One is, I think it is going to be a lift, I just think, I think it will be. It already is, so from the sense of, like, the amount of time that I'm spending and Pam is spending coordinating, I mean, it's, we're going through a change management process, right? And so it is taking time. I have a lot more meetings on my calendar, for example, with my colleagues in the service area, and then that has implications for the rest of the leadership team, and so there are definitely things that are coming through. When I compare it to or think about what happened during the pandemic, right, where all of the sudden there was an emergency and so we kind of responded, it's, you know, it's a different sort of dynamic, but we definitely know how to reallocate calendars, and there's just an implication of, like, it's harder to get on my calendar, it's harder to get on Chabri's calendar. But, and one of the things that I'm really appreciating about the fact that we are piloting it now in the six months is that it's helping the administrative side before we get to having 12 new electeds and a new mayor. We are really practicing and understanding what it means to work in this new way. So I'm, I'm very glad that we have this opportunity before we're needing to brief everybody and to council-elect their first council president and decide what they're going to do from a committee standpoint and how we're going to engage with all of them, that we get a chance to understand what, what it means kind of for day-to-day work. But we are in the process, this is on Chabri's team, of hiring somebody who would be a policy analyst, who would be additional capacity on the government relations side, and so that position is going to be a shared position for the next year with the DCA, with Donnie, and so that's, it's going to be a great kind of opportunity to really be enmeshed in the transition and then come back and have those relationships, and so that's something that we're doing proactively. The other thing, and Justin's leading on this, is that we are already being asked to put together the briefing materials for the new council, and everybody who's running for office right now is being told that there are going to be specific briefing sequences, right? And so, like, because we're now operating in this way with kind of a centralized governance structure, they're really trying to have us organized, so we have to put together a four-pager, and Justin is doing that work so that we will be ready. So I think it's, it's something that we should continue talking about in terms of the workload implications for, and, and like, just what, but I think it feels like we are as well-positioned as we might be and really well-served by having Donnie in the role that he's in. I think we're really lucky, yeah.
I've probably heard a lot more about this than the rest of the commissioners, but it has been a very heavy lift for Kimberly. Very hard on it, plus being one of the more senior people in city government now, having been in this role for a long time, they look to her for leadership, and they're looking to her as, to provide an example for how to navigate this whole thing, which is pretty complicated. I don't know if you've seen the materials about actually how it's going to work in the system. Have you seen those, or have you seen anything about how the new council is going to be structured and all that?
Yeah, are you talking about the org chart?
Yes.
Yeah.
You've got all that, yeah, okay. So, so our place in the org chart, you know, is identified, and we kind of know where that's going to be, but what that means day-to-day, you know, that's a lot going on, a lot behind the scenes, I think.
I think as a commissioner, I feel like I would be, if, once you get the four-pager done, I think that that might be similar to the two, the one page, this is not going to be one page, let's be honest, you're doing a lot of stuff, but maybe that, like, four-pager will be this similar to the sort of one-pager, and then that could be our, our shocking points around that, and then I'm also willing to help take meetings to just go through that four-pager with people, if that's helpful for you. Like, if you have a list of people that you need, me as a commissioner, to just go do that four-pager so that you don't have to do that four-pager with, I could do that, and I want to speak for anybody else's.
I really appreciate that, and I do think, so Tavo comes to some of the commission meetings, and I think there is a lot of value in having, and so, you know, if folks are interested in joining in those briefings and in particularly in making those relationships, you know, at this point, we've been in this role for a while, and so things are kind of just, it's fairly easy with the current council, right? But when we have so many folks who are new, I think it'll be even more important and helpful, so thank you.
Great, I didn't know we were, we were able to come to some of those meetings, so that would be great.
Yeah, okay, yep.
Just to stay knowledgeable and really know what's going on.
And I think we, to the extent that there are individual topics that we are discussing or-